Okay. The Wellington Conservation Commission Special Meeting is going to start at 7:03. And roll call, we have Peter Anderson, Bob Shabbett, Carol Jordan, Marilyn Schreiber, Kathy Demers. So the only item on our agenda today is to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, to decide what the Wellington Conservation Commission will be putting in for funding requests. So we're not going to discuss any other items tonight. If there's any other issues, they'll come up in our, at our April meeting. Okay, but the things that are on to the table tonight would be anything that we could potentially get some funding for. So why don't we open the meeting up by having people, let's brainstorm a little bit, maybe make some suggestions of potential funding requests.
Kathy, I think that might extend also to talking about alternate funding because, and whether it would be best to ask for funds from ARPA or to use our budgetary funds. I think that would, would not go beyond the scope of the meeting if we're talking about, you know, funding with ARPA as opposed to funding from other sources. I think that would fall within the limits of this meeting, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that we can discuss whether or not it would be something that would go into ARPA or that we would discuss in the April 20th meeting regarding funding from our regular budget. Is that what you're saying, Carol?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, you know, because it, you know, we have other funding sources and we might want to be able to, to, to do that. Also, we have quite a bit of money left in the current operating budget. And if we're going in for ARPA, I think we want to be able to show that we have, we are spending most of the money that was given to us for budgetary purposes.
That's a good point. All right, all right. Does anybody have some things that they'd like to throw out for brainstorming?
Well, I already threw mine out because I sent it out to an email to everybody. I had difficulties. I think Patty Phillips got it. I kept getting bounces on her email. Then I realized that I hadn't put enough zeros in front of, I believe the digit was a five. And I don't think it came back as a bounce after that, but I'm not positive. But I, I know that everybody, I think everybody else got the email on the brush cutter. I think, as I said at the other meeting, that that would be a good purchase. I mean, if we don't want to use ARPA funds, I really think that we should consider purchasing it because there's so many areas beyond where the, you know, that big field is behind, where we have the, the benches that look over Taylor Pond. That area is so well-used that it would be nice if it could go back to being that beautiful meadow that was there with the machine, either like the one that was, was maybe just an explanatory, maybe the one that we suggest, that Dave and I suggested is not big enough, but it's the concept of owning something like that, that you push. It's small enough to get over the bridge and it will make that area maintain a meadow-like appearance, which I think that was really a nice feature back there.
Marilyn, I can't remember what the estimated cost of that was.
I can bring it up on my phone. I want to say off the top of my head that it was $6.99, but I'll look it up for you. Dave just said, "That's about right, $6.99."
Call it $700. And did that include an extra cutter blade or is it just?
I'll have to look, I'll look it back up for you, Carol.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, yeah, it would be nice to have it at our beck and call, but it also means someone's got to store it, keep it, maintain it. And that can maybe be a nuisance to somebody. That may not be available to the commission for very long or, they can be rented. I mean, it would cost more money to rent them. I know Home Depot rents a walk behind Brush Hog. There's another option. I've seen one of those in there and I did some quick looking on, on the interweb and, no, I'm not sure what the daily, I saw there was $700 for a week or something. We wouldn't need it for a week, but if one could rent it for a day or a couple of days and make good use of it for a couple of days for, you know, a couple of hundred bucks or something, that might be a better way to go and it would be likely to be a fairly heavy-duty machine.
It occurred to me also that, that we might be able to store it at Public Works since it, you know, it's going to be used for town purposes. And, and we might be able to use town for, for fuel as well. If we, if we own the equipment, it wouldn't necessarily, we could look into the option of having it stored on town premises rather than someone having it in there, have to be responsible for it in their home.
Yeah. We might also want to just double check to see if Public Works actually owns some kind of equipment that's similar. I don't know if they do. But that's.
22 inches wide. That was the, that was the feature that led it, Dave, to it because it would go over the bridge.
Yep. That's, I think that's an important consideration. So, you know, I think it's worth looking into whether, you know, whether we can get cooperation from the town in terms of storing and perhaps fueling. But have something that's sized for us. I suspect if they have a brush cutter, it's probably larger than that because they don't have the same restrictions we have in terms of, of access to where we need it.
Yeah, I would think that would be a fairly Mickey Mouse size for the town.
Yes. And the engine is a Briggs and Stratton and, and that's still a reliable company. That still has the quality that, that they used to have as well, right? Briggs and Stratton is still a big name and smaller. Yeah, okay. And it is 16, right now it's on sale. It's usually $7.99 and right now it's $6.99. And of course they're shipping in here, free shipping. Ooh. And you can get it with electric start instead of manual for $100 more.
Yeah, with the battery that you have to extra weight. But yeah, what's the brand on this?
Just a moment.
DR.
DR.
Oh, it's a DR. Oh, okay. Oh, all right.
Yeah.
And that has a blade on the front of it too?
It's an option.
Oh, blade or string?
Blade or string.
Comes with string, but you can get the blades as an option. I, I didn't see on the website what the additional cost was for blades.
And there's other models.
Would we want blade? We would probably want blade, wouldn't we?
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
For $100 more, you can get a self-propelled one.
I did call the rental place in Tallinn on Route 44. They have rental equipment. And I did speak to somebody this morning who said they do have a brush cutter there that they rent out for $75 a day and they do put one tank of gas in it. They like you to come, have it come back with some gas in it. But, you know, they take care of all the maintenance and all that too. I mean, that's another option is to rent something like that. Pete also mentioned the Brush Hog, which is probably a little larger. You know, rented for a day or two and we'd have the two meadows and maybe the Taylor Home site that we might want to use it around.
Right. Oh, I don't have my heart set on it. It was kind of like we, we decided to just pick one that looked good so that the conversation could start and you could look at it and get a visual and get other ideas. And it looks like that's what it did. That's good that it's, it might, I understand the idea of renting. I get, I think it's wise, as long as there's somebody on the commission who owns a truck and can go pick it up and has ramps that can take it off the back of the vehicle. So those are added pieces that have to be added into the equation. Is, is there someone on the commission who has a truck and is willing to take the chances of some beating up of the bed of the truck by having that in there and securing it in there properly, you know, all those ifs, ands and buts?
That's what I was thinking.
You're not a real truck owner if you're gonna be that concerned about the bed of your pickup.
But you still have to secure it back there somehow.
I guess, I guess that's why I was thinking if by any chance we could, could store it in the town facility, we could just ask them to drop it off at the park. You know, they have the proper equipment to transport it when, when we wanted to use it and, and.
That crossed my mind too.
Yeah, so, you know, anyway, that's a thought.
All right. I, let's put our, let's put our hand out, put it down on the ARPA request and see what happens. $1,000.
So make a motion, Pete.
I make a motion that Conservation Commission includes, I don't know, $900 and that's request for maintenance of. Down.
For Brush Hog for?
For brush cutter?
Well, this is referred, if you're going to purchase this one, it's referred to as a trimmer mower. But if you're going to get a brush cutter, that's fine too.
Let's call it a brush cutter. Sounds better.
Dave says this has a brush cutter attachment.
Yeah.
But is it included in the price, Marilyn? The way I read it.
Let me, let me ask Dave. I'll be back in a moment.
Kathy, when do we have to have the exact figures? Because I think we might want to put this together into a couple, some, maybe one or more packages for things that would include perhaps equipment and, you know, signage or whatever for, so that we have general categories and we could support it with information for specific items to be included in a, in a package. So when do we need to know?
Well, the sooner we get our requests in, probably the better chances we have of having these approved because they've already expended over half of the $1.7 million and they still have requests coming in. So it may not take long.
Dave is looking up the details as we speak.
Okay, thanks Marilyn. So looking at the way that other commissions and boards have submitted their ARPA requests, they have done it in more of a singular fashion for each item. For example, the fire department requested radios as one item. And then they also requested Scott air packs as another item. So they didn't bundle it all. They, everything was, you know, a line item, a separate request. So I would suggest we do the same. You know, for example, if we had any other equipment, we could maybe put it together as Carol's mentioning, but you probably wouldn't want to put this together with the bridges and boardwalk construction materials. That might be a separate item. Yep, Bob.
I always suggest that if we're going to buy something like that, it's, we, we get something that's self-propelled. I've walked behind a sickle bar mower and you don't want to be pushing that, those things. You want it to pull you along and just adjust the speed accordingly.
And I believe that the one that Marilyn had sent around for people to look at is self-propelled. Chris and I have a DR brush trimmer like this up in Vermont and boy, it pulls you along.
Yeah.
You feel like you're going for a real ride sometimes.
Yeah, the society, the society has a sickle bar on a, on a mower. And, you know, it's got cleated tires, so it starts going. It, it does move, but you, once you get to know how it's operating, you know, it's pretty easy to control.
Yeah, I think this might be well-received because of the, the problems that they have with shortage of staff and shortage of staff and other, and other resources at DPW that if, you know, if we were to, to have this piece of equipment, so it would be something that we would be within our capabilities that might be a good argument in favor of, of our purchasing something like this.
Bob, I just have a question for you. The sickle bar mower, is that something that could be used at, at the Fenton Park?
Yeah, and small stuff, you can't go into, you know, not much bigger than pencil-sized stuff. Because then you start breaking the teeth and you gotta stop it. You gotta pull everything apart and replace the teeth. There are those triangular-shaped teeth that they use for haymowers. They used to use for mowing hay for farming.
Okay.
That's what this is.
Nothing bigger than a pencil? Because the DR trimmers, they say a half inch, which may be a little bit less than your thumb.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's gotta be, you know, it's gotta be pretty heavy-duty to be able to do that. And those blades have to be turned in a good clip to be able to chew through that.
Right. Where, so like a brush hog is usually something you can use on heavier.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Marilyn, did you?
I don't know, Dave. Have you found the details on that, Dave?
I'm just working on it. How about if we just sort of go through some stuff and leave the, the exact dollar amounts for the moment and we come back to things because some, some things there are options. Do you want me to talk about the pedestrian crossing signs, Kathy?
Yeah, you can go ahead, Carol.
One thing we've talked about was doing pedestrian crossing signs on Mason Road where the parking lot is and also where the nip-up trail crosses. And I did look into, there's this, on Amazon, what seemed to be a fairly decent price was a company called Smart Sign. But I, what I, the information I sent out, I think I've changed my mind because I did, we went around, I was sort of looking at road signs. And it turns out they, although they have them in 12 by 18, that, that might not, it might be preferable to use 18 by 24-inch. And the one that I thought would be nice would be one that has slow in big letters and then stick figures of an adult and a child kind of, and then at the bottom, pedestrian crossing. Because you have the big slow and the, and the graphic is what will catch people's eye. They're, you know, the classic reflective bright yellow metal aluminum signs. They come pre-drilled with posting for holes. And they also, we could also get the, the green steel enamel steel posts. And those, those, you, you, what, you put the post into the ground a foot and a half and that allows you to mount the, the bottom of the sign five feet above ground level. So it goes up from there. And they, but they also come with, with, you can get attachment kits to put them on the, so this would be sort of standard road sign kinds of things. And we would need four signs, one for each direction at each cross. And so if we went with the 18 by 24, it would, the cost, assuming that, that things, things don't change because this is Amazon. So, you know, we, we can't, we probably should put in some, you know, a little bit of flexibility because, you know, we don't, I'm assuming we can get, the, the free shipping would apply to the posts and, and, and other things as well as the signs. And that would bring the total cost, well, 330, 335, 22. So we probably want to round that up some and need to, to verify that all of that could be shipped free. And we would order through the town to avoid having sales tax. And actually, that's something we should do with a brush hog as well, is make sure that we could order that through the town to be billed to, to what the appropriate funding source, rather than have it, you know, reimbursed, do it on a reimbursement basis. So I don't know what people think, think about that.
And I, I did check with Troy just to find out about metal poles. And he does say, say that he has several sizes and that Public Works could provide those to us. So we might be able, you know, to avoid that cost. I would like to say, just in terms of size, I, I'd like to suggest we think of something smaller. Actually, I drove up and down Mason Road today and I had to go to the lab, so I was on Route 44. And I was trying to pay attention to signs as I went by. And I realized that there's, that several large signs like bus stopping signs on the side that don't pay attention to at all. So I'm, and the speeds on Mason Road, actually, I was trying to push it a little bit and I was going 25 miles an hour and I was bumping all over the place. So I doubt that people are going to be going more than 25 miles an hour on that road in general.
I don't know.
Well, try, try it, just, just try it one of these days. I was surprised. I mean, I was less than 25 and with all the potholes, I was really having a hard time.
I know at one selectmen's meeting where they were talking about Mason Road, they were talking about, about having problems with speeding because of people cutting through from the apartment, using that as a cut-through to get to Yukon from, from some of the apartments. And so, you know, I, I think it also depends somewhat on the condition of the, of the road at different times. I have no problem with going with a slightly smaller sign. But Dave, Dave did go and measure like the, the speed limit sign on Penny Hill Road and that turned out to be 18 by 24. The seven, the eight, 12 by 18 is fairly small. However, it would be a bright color. And so that would serve to be attention-getting. So I, I'm just, I'm not arguing particularly for any particular item, but I, but that is something that we thought particularly because of we are getting hopefully more people to be using the parks and with the, and with the parking lot available and the trails on the opposite side and as well as the trail crossing for the nip market probably would be a good thing to provide extra safety and whatever the cost.
Thank you, Carol. Bob, you had your hand up?
Why don't we consider talking with signs of all kinds and having a custom, some custom trail signs made up that says "trail crossing"?
Um, yeah, the thing, the reason I think it's probably better to go with this is that these, these signs are designed for long-term use in the out-of-doors. And they, one of the things that this particular sign has is, they have, it's, it's, what is it? I'm sorry, I, I'm tired tonight. It's, it has film on it to, so that, that protects the surface and, and you can wash off graffiti and things of that kind. So they're, they're designed specifically for that purpose. If we could use posts for the town, the posts are one of the more expensive features. I don't have any particular preference for size of sign. I'd be willing to go with lower because it's a low signage area and I think they would stick out.
I, I would vote against putting any signs out there. First of all, I don't see much reason for it. The speeds on the road are very low. And, you know, it's a rough road as Kathy said. Second of all, anyone on a trail crossing the road, given the roughness of the road, will hear a car coming from many hundreds of yards in each direction. So in terms of someone walking out in the road and not being aware of the, of the cars out there is, is extremely small unless they're totally in la-la land.
Well.
And reasons, excuse me, Carol, I still have.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Pete. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Um, and probably most of all, no one driving down a rural country lane needs to see some very large, ugly, yellow sign hanging on a post there to spoil the rural countryside. So that together with the fact that, that I think there's very, very, very little reason to put them out there. And the fact that they're ugly out there in the woods, I would vote against any sign at all.
Yeah, actually, just to clarify, Pete, this was not my idea. This was an idea that was brought up in conjunction with, with the emphasis for, by the state for safety issues as, as far as parking and, and road safety goes, that I believe was brought up by Kathy. So I'm not pushing this. I was just gathering information on possible solutions to that.
I'm just giving an opinion on it.
Yeah, okay, but I'm just saying, I'm not pushing it. So I just, I'm just.
Where'd you, Carol? It's not your, it's not your baby. Okay.
It's not necessarily my baby. I just gathered information because I thought there was some interest in doing this, but I'm not wedded to it. So just so that we clarify that.
But the, the other option would be to think about, and I'm sure some of you have seen them as well. There are signs that you can put up that just, they, they're not even bright. They might be a brown sign that says, that shows a hiker. And it just shows like where there's a crossing.
Right.
And it might do two things. One, it might make motorists aware that somebody may be coming across. And two, when people are using the road, they'll be aware, just in general, gee, there's trails down here. This might be an interesting place to come back and take a hike.
Yeah, I think there are hiker, hiker signs. We could look into something like that that might have a, just a white background. I'm just, I'm just saying, this is, these are some options. And, and if we wanted to include it in a package, I'm not necessarily advocating for anything particular.
I think that's kind of what Bob was suggesting, just a trail crossing sign. That would be more to inform. I think maybe, as Kathy said, include some people in that there's a trail there. But number two, someone looking for the trail, might include them in that, that that's where the trail is. But in terms of, of traffic and drivers, I don't think it'd do much.
Yeah, well, just a couple of things, Pete. When Kathy mentioned the other day when we were out there that somebody had come down the, the road pretty fast. Another thing is that we want to encourage families to use our trails. And trust me, you cannot trust a two-year-old or a three-year-old or a four-year-old not to just take off. And, you know, so to, it's, it, there is safety concerns from both the driver's perspective and the pedestrian perspective. So you can't rely, and certainly this day and age, if you've ever driven around the Yukon campus, there is not a young adult or a teenager who does not cross the road with their eyes looking down at a device. So it, there, I think there is some concern, but I'm not necessarily pushing this, just so you know.
Like I said, you'd have to be in la-la land and go walking across the road here in a car coming from both directions, quarter mile away, and just wander around in the street.
Peter, what I'm saying, my experience. Most people are in la-la land.
So I would, I, I'd like to make a motion, first of all, that we, we table this and put it
That's fine.
on, on another meeting because I think whatever we decide, if we decide to buy some type of signage, we can buy it with our current funds, our budget.
Yep.
And then we have some time to look into it more. Maybe people can look online. Bob, maybe you could even check with signs of all kinds and just find out if they have aluminum signs. Maybe they've made something in the past for trails. It's.
They work on everything from metal to stone.
Okay. So, you know, it's something we could explore and maybe come up with something that kind of meets some of the goals that we're talking about, a little bit on the safety side, just acknowledges to motorists, hey, you know, somebody might be crossing here. And then also it makes the public aware that there are trails that they can use as they're driving down that road.
Yeah.
Well, that's my motion that we just tabled this item.
Second, your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay, so move.
Marilyn, who's that handsome devil sitting next to you?
Well, Dave is, Dave is ready to answer questions about, about the DR trimmer because he's got it up on his computer.
Okay.
What you, what, there.
The one that I gave you the, the URL for, it comes, if you want to put electric start on it, you can't. It's $100 more. If you want to buy blades for it, you can. It sell, they sell two kinds of brush blades for it. One of them has got a sort of a, the outside edge of a disc is like a chainsaw chain. And the other one has got a disc, yeah, that one. The other one has got a disc about three inches diameter with three pivoting flails on it. And they say, that's this one. And they say it'll cut up to three-eighths of an inch thick brush. But I'm sure that if you went into it slow, you could do more than that.
That one cuts three inches in diameter. Dave, do they charge extra for those, those blades? Do you have any?
Yes, of course.
Do you have an idea of how much?
Um, well, that would be, that's a different page. I didn't, I didn't go there because. Um, well, that would be, that's a different page. I didn't, I didn't go there because.
Just a general idea, are we talking another hundred dollars?
No, it'll, yeah, for the two blades, probably it's around a hundred.
Okay. So he can keep looking that up and you, we, we can segue back to then again, if you want to.
Okay. Are there any other items that people wanted to bring up tonight that we put in an ARPA request for?
Are we not interested in doing the Taylor Pond Bridge? Is that, is that more than we want to bite off?
Peter, do you want to speak to that? Because we looked at it.
Yeah, we looked at it. Um, Kathy and I were out there the other day and actually the underpinnings looked pretty good to us. What, what's decaying is the railing. The, the shoe at the bottom of the railing and some of the balusters and maybe the rail. Uh, but, you know, I got down and, and looked underneath and the underside of the, of the, uh, the treads looked solid. And, uh, you know, and poking around on the surface, it looked like they, they would be, uh, they'd be good for some while yet, I think. So the replacement of the, of the railing probably is in order. Those aren't the original railings. The original ones. Were pressure treated, small pressure treated, uh, just square posts. And I forget whether the tops and bottoms were pressure treated or not, but that was vandalized and a good number of those were all kicked out. Um, so Bob Bittner, I, Bob Bittner and I rebuilt that, that whole, uh, that whole bridge thirty-eight feet long. With eight zillion balusters there and a lot of spikes. Um, so that, that could use replacement. But I think the bridge is solid. You know, the, the bridges will need replacement sometime. That, that would be, that would be a major, major undertaking for that. That would be beyond the Conservation Commission. I mean, I don't know how they did it to start with. I mean, those are major, uh, utility pole. Posts sunk deeply into the, into the, the bankings at an angle on both sides. And I think Joe Philippi said they're embedded in concrete. So that, that was quite the project. So, um, the basics, I think, are still solid on it.
Marilyn, was, what part of the bridge were you concerned about when you mentioned that? Was it the?
Well, we were standing on the bridge, looking over the side, just looking at the water. And then I looked down at the area that Pete just described. Which is where the ball, the, the, uh. Yeah, sets into the board that sits on the bridge. That looked pretty bad. And that's what you just described.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm, I'm really glad you looked underneath and you found that those boards are, are in good shape, because that's a, that's a big relief to know. That that part is still sturdy and strong.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I stuck screwdriver or something down into the soil around those posts in the banking to see. Uh, to see if they were solid. They appeared to be so at the time, but, uh, that, that maybe could be checked again. If I remember to bring a sharp implement out there to, to dig in, dig down a little bit and poke down low. And see if they're, they're still solid. You know, we, we, uh, I did a rough estimate, I think, on, or I'm about to do a rough estimate on the replacement of that. That railing, though, and for whatever, whether it's ARPA or whether it's just our funds at, at some point near future.
So, um, Peter, the thing is tonight, I mean, we can always discuss ARPA funds again. At our, at the meeting that we're having on April twentieth. But if we want to put in something before then to ARPA. We'd have to make decisions tonight. So, um, I mean, we can put in requests at any time, just so you know, when, if there's still money left. Even if it's six months from now. I just think that, um, a lot of the money is going to be expended pretty quickly. So. Any other items that people wanted to bring up tonight?
Yeah, Kathy, you'd gotten a bid from Conwood for the, for the, um, um, doing, redoing the, uh. Park maintenance plan, forest management plan for Nolton and Talmage.
Yeah.
You said it was fifty dollars.
No, the other one was fifty dollars, the rail blades.
Do you want to speak to that, Kathy, or, or?
Sure, well, you know, I was, um, I thought maybe you wanted to bring it up, Carol, because it was your suggestion originally to, um. See if we could get some ARPA funds to do our forest management plan update. The, uh, current Nolton-Talmage plan is only good to the end of this year. And when, when we do the new one, we'd want to incorporate the new Talmage property as well, so that, that additional sixteen acres. So the total acreage, if you add up the current Talmage, the Nolton and the new property, it would be a hundred and eighty-two acres. And I did query Conwood this week to find out what a new plan would cost, an update, and they gave us a quote of twenty-eight hundred dollars. So I believe that we could potentially put this in as an ARPA request. Um, it, it fits, in my mind anyway, under one of the categories, which is to invest in. Uh, water and, water and sewer from the fact that it is, if we, we can make an argument that. You know, a healthy, resilient forest is important for stormwater management and especially in our drinking water watershed. We're also contributing to water quality by having a healthy, resilient forest. And that's really the purpose of a forest management plan is to, you know, help us to make sure that we're doing whatever it takes. To keep it to be a healthy forest.
And, and there also, if you look at the ARPA site, um, the parks and, and recreation are, are very important. And they put a lot of emphasis on parks and recreational opportunities. And part of this, you know, addresses keeping the forest healthy and, um, advising on, uh, but also on. Um, possible additional trail development and things of that kind. So I, I, I think it definitely falls under, uh, uh, ARPA. And would, would allow us to avoid having to go to other sources. Um, just generally, um, so people know where we stand. At the moment, we have less than six thousand dollars. In park and recreation fund. And that's been our primary source for, for getting that, doing the forest management type of stuff. And, um, and there, there really are no, no funding sources. So when that money's gone, it's gone and that fund will go out of existence. Um, and as far as open space goes, there's about seventy-four thousand, but sixty thousand of that is encumbered for the Talmage. Purchase, uh, uh, associated expenses. And, um, so there's like fourteen thousand unless we go back. So I think we could, um, it would be nice if we could avoid having to dip into any of those resources. To, since we're due to, to re-up the plan anyway, um, we could argue that on, uh, as a legitimate expense under ARPA.
Any other comments?
Well, yeah, well, let's do that. So we put in a number here and, uh, make a motion to add that to the, uh, request.
Yeah, well, I'd like to move.
So moved.
Well, I'd like to move that we request twenty-eight hundred dollars from the ARPA funds. To pay for a forest management plan done by, well, we can just say forest management plan. We don't have to say specifically Conwood. So, um, so I move that we request twenty-eight hundred dollars from the ARPA funds. For a forest management plan for the Nolton and Talmage properties. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Thank you, guys. So that's one request taken off the table. There we go.
Kathy, just a question. Um, are, are the ARPA, doesn't, are the ARPA funds in hand? So because, um, if, if this were approved, there, they would be asking, there would be a, a deposit required. So I just wanted to know if the funds are, are available.
No, my understanding is they've already spent the first allotment that, um, the town has gotten. And they won't get another allotment until July first for the second half.
Okay.
So if they're approved, they won't be available to us until, uh, after July.
Okay, that makes sense. And, and our, uh, the, uh, the, uh, report was, uh, was dated October of two thousand and twelve. So it, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to, so we would have to, to, we would just have to discuss with, with, um. With the vendor to make sure that, that we could handle the cash flow on that.
Okay, so my understanding from, um, Con was, Conwood, that basically this bid is kind of open for this year. So we could do it later in the year. Um, could start it, they could start the field work. And at that time, once we get approved, my understanding is that we'd have access to a full twenty-eight hundred. So we should be able to pay the deposit out of that.
Okay, so it sounds good. I just wanted to make sure we, I clarified that.
Did we mention in the request that the plan, current plan is expiring and when? Not like.
I, I can, what I can do, Peter, is, um, when I put the request in, I can put some additional information about that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it, I, I don't think it has to be in our motion, but I definitely.
We're not, we're not, we're not filling out the application. We're just enabling you to put that information, that request in.
Yeah. You guys want to think about authorizing me to go ahead and, you know, fill out the applications, I can.
And the blades are a hundred and seventy plus.
You're authorized.
All right, so anything else that people?
Well, getting close, this webs, you know how some websites, you have to pan through like a million pages to get all the details? It looks like the machine itself is.
Eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred dollars if it's electric start.
And seven hundred dollars if it's manual start. And you don't have to worry about batteries, et cetera, then. And it's a hundred and seventy dollars for the, um. Um, little brush blade that'll cut through trees up to about three inches in diameter. And then it's another fifty dollars for the one that r- cuts brush up to three-eighths of an inch in diameter.
And, and some of that is free shipping and some of it isn't. It's, it's hard to, yeah, it's hard to suss through it until you probably order. So it might be one of those deals where we go back to the. Whoever's making the final decision, go in and add up all of those individual items to come up with a number. Instead of doing it in a rush at this moment, because the website is, some websites are easier to come up with a total than others. So, um.
How specific do we need to be in, in the ARPA request, you know, down to the?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be exact dollars that I understand, especially for something with, with a small amount that we're talking about. So let's say we put in a thousand dollars for the request to cover those.
Yeah, that would easily cover.
And, you know, that would cover shipping. And even if, if some of it wasn't a hundred percent covered by the ARPA funds, we still have some money in our budget. We could buy the blades separately later, those kinds of things, so.
And, and we do, we do have, um, after encumbering the money for Barbara Austin's nature walk in June. We still have nine hundred and seventy-two dollars left in our operating budget. And, um, I, the only, I've really not, uh, other than possibly buying some plants. The thi- things that will come up at our next meeting, by, like, buying some plants for the, um, for the Girl Scouts. Uh, pollinator gardens or something like that, we could use up some of the funds.
Well, the other, the other thing that probably will come up is for our workday on the twenty-third. Um, Peter and I, when we did the inventory, we identified some bridge projects that probably should be not, be done now. Um, during that park day. So we could use some of our regular budget funds. We could expend that on, at, at our April meeting. Some boardwalk material and so on, just for that particular day.
Right, that's, I, I've really been in favor of trying to spend down as much as we can of this year's budget. Um, if we're, if we're going to be looking for funding from other sources for other things.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Any other, and we have, again, we've already had, I believe we'll probably get approval for our twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three budget, right? And then we ask fifteen hundred. So after, in July of this year, we're going to start fresh with a whole new budget.
Right.
Budget, so.
Yeah, so Dave, Dave came up with nine thirty and you could pad that a little bit more if, if needed. That's just a rough estimate is what it would cost for that trimmer. And I believe you still have the, um. The, uh, the email that, that I sent. So if you needed to go back and check it, that, that's the number that he just came up with.
Would it, would it make sense just to sense, uh, uh, you know, authorizations to spend, um, or auth- as our maximum. On the maximum amount you could spend, maybe round it up a little bit, uh, just be, because of uncertainties about things like cost of shipping and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Could even round it up to twelve hundred, just to be on the safe side.
Right, because this.
Eleven or, about eleven or twelve hundred.
Yeah, I, I, I'd say put it at twelve and then we might be able to buy an extra blade or something that, that we could use down the road. If, uh, and still stay within, within the authorization.
Because you don't know when this free shipping deal expires and you, you'd hate to underbid if, if, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Free shipping deals do not usually go for, forever.
So am I hearing people say we want to try to, we want to put a motion on the table tonight to put that in for ARPA? Or do we want to put that in for ARPA at some other point?
Put it in now. Sure. Yes.
Yeah, let's put it in. Um, but in the meantime, let's see what, what we can find out about, about, um, cooperating with. The road crew, um, for storage for the town, with the Town Public Works for Storage and that kind of thing. So it would be helpful to be able. Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying.
It's better to act first and then ask for forgiveness than to ask.
Yeah, I'm just saying, say, between now and when we actually go to present it to ARPA, it would be nice to, you know, to, to see if we could tie up some of the loose ends. Um, but I would.
Do we want to put in some money for down the road for, if we need to replace a good, a substantial portion of our infrastructure? That we've got in the parks now?
I, I think that would be a good idea.
I came up with a rough, quick total of, of replacing all the bridges and boardwalks, all except for the. Not, or not including the King Post Bridge there, about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, and that would be to replace all of them?
All the bridges, all the boardwalks.
Okay.
We have a lot of miles of boardwalks and bridges out there.
We do.
I haven't totaled up the feet. I didn't have a chance to do that. I want to do that. The issue here is, is that we don't want to put that in under this ARPA. And then have to buy the lumber and store it for how many years until we need it? Yeah, if you had to, if you have to do that, yeah, it's not like we could put off the, the purchasing then for, for two twenty, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Then twenty-six, you have to spend it all when you get it.
My understanding is that, the way I understood it, was that we have until, they have until twenty twenty-four. To appropriate that one point seven million and then up to two thousand and. Twenty-six to actually spend the money. Um, but, so if we put in for funds for the bridges and the boardwalk, obviously, we don't have to run out this year and buy everything. We have a few years to buy it and use it. I'd like to suggest, Peter, maybe that we go half that amount, just because I don't know that we'd end up really replacing everything. You know, um, especially within the next few years. And I don't want to have too much money sitting in this pot. And then have a lot of pressure for us to have to go and replace everything if we don't have the resources, uh, manpower to do that. That's, that's my thinking. Maybe just cut that in half.
Yep.
How do other people feel?
I think that's a reason, I think that's reasonable. Because if we have to store it somewhere. First of all, you have to find somebody who has the space at home to do that. And, you know, that can always be a liability. I mean, I'm not worried about the liability, but you know, if you had a fire or, I mean, I think the idea of cutting it in half. Is a reasonable, considering that we don't have a, a lot of human power to put it, put all of that board feed out. In the, in a short amount of time. I, I think it's reasonable to, to cut it in half.
Uh, the other thing is that we've traditionally used a lot of our, our budgetary money, at le- you know, typically anywhere from. For the parks, it ranges from a thousand dollars some years to five hundred, you know, it, we've spent, we spent a lot of. We've spent, we spent a lot of our money on the parks, um, and that's, a lot of that is in materials. And, um, so I think, uh, it's, it would tend to undercut our, our budget requests if, uh, you know, and make it more difficult to, to justify the amount where we ask for annually, if we put too much into, um, into the, the longer term replacement stuff.
Peter, can I ask you, and, and really thank you so much for doing that. I know that takes, took a lot of work. Um, and thank you for your help the other day when we walked around and did the inventory. Um, but you know, we were kind of pushing this hard to get this done quickly. Um, did that include things like screws as well or just the, the wood?
Oh, that's, that's just, just a ballpark number thrown in. Yeah, extra stuff like that. By the time any of this gets purchased in a couple of years, the, the prices will have gone up significantly anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was pricing out, like we were thinking for the kiosk, for example, uh, uh, some three-quarter inch marine plywood. And, uh, which we've used on signs before, maybe I have, and I don't know if the commission has or not. A- and Will had said, well, we haven't gotten any of that in since last August. Uh, cause she said, maybe it's something to do with the price. It's two hundred and ten dollars a sheet.
Wow.
Yep.
It's.
So if we were building a kiosk, we'd have to come up with something else, cause I don't, that they don't even have it. And that's, uh, and it's very expensive, so. Oh, I see, you see the Yukon one, they were just using boards, uh, which is an option we could consider, anyway.
No, it's under a small roof anyway, so it's not really going to take the full effects of the weather.
No, yeah.
Well, um, do we want to, Peter, how do you feel about that in terms of kind of cutting that back a bit? Because as Carol said.
I'm not saying we should have spent, we should ask for seventy-five hundred. I don't care. I have nothing invested. I just said, for, for, for your information, that's the value of, of our infrastructure out there.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if it were to be replaced, what in two thousand dollars, that's fine, I would think.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would say so.
Well, I think it would be reasonable to ask for, you know, three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, that would include other things we might need is, you know, updating some of the posts for, um, the Taylor Pond Trail. You know, those posts that go in if there's any rotten those or replacing signage and so on and so forth. So.
No, another thing, another thing might be considered and, and maybe that's if the, uh, fishing observation dick gets put back, back in place. But, you know, I think we were kicking around the idea, or somebody was at one point, that, uh, it would be nice to provide handicapped access to that from the parking lot. Um, so, uh, right now, someone out there, uh, it's not accessible, any of the water out there. With some kind of pathway, a decent graded, uh, firm pathway with an approach ramp up onto the platform. It may be appreciated by, by some folks now. Whether that could be another Boy Scout, I would think that that might be a, a good Boy Scout, another Eagle Scout project to, to add on to the first Eagle Scout project at some point. But otherwise, and I don't know if we would want to undertake that anyway. Uh, I mean, I, really it should be done professionally, like go in there with a, with, with a, you know, a bobcat and, and take out the, the surplus soil and put down a good solid base that isn't gonna wash away and run away. But, uh, and that would require some, if we were gonna put in ARPA money, we'd have to have a way to estimate that. And ask some commercial enterprise what it would cost to put in something like that. It would be nice to have, I think. You could argue that it's a good idea and I don't think many people would oppose it. Uh, but it's a matter of the money and who and how.
Yeah. Um, well, certainly that's, I think that's a great project idea. Like you said, we can kind of keep that, um, in our minds. If, uh, the Eagle Scouts come forward, some, there's also grants that you can get for uh, putting in trails and so on. And then there's state matching grants. We love those, right?
Hmm, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not to, touch it anymore, state grants. I've had it my lifetime experience with, with state grants. This year was a particularly difficult year to be applying for anything, I think.
So let's, um, going back to, uh, infrastructure, bridges and boardwalk materials, uh, building materials. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we request thirty-five hundred dollars in ARPA funding for the building and bridges, excuse me, the, um, bridges and boardwalk building materials. And that include, and that includes all of the open space properties. It's not just Fenton Ruby. Um, you could use them for, you know, we should put in that we could use them for.
Yes, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, for, for the other, for the, for the Conservation Commission managed properties, um, but just, I'm, I'm assuming, which is Nolton.
Kathy, you writing, are you writing these motions down?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm taking minutes and I'll write it up.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so let me, let me.
I'll, I'll sec, I'll second that, unless someone already had.
All, uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The clock agrees too.
Okay, so moved.
Are you calling in from London, Peter? Ben, is that you? Where are you?
Give me three more minutes and you'll hear another one going off next.
Okay, so to recap, we're do, the brush cutter for twelve hundred, Nolton Talmage Forest Management Plan for twenty-eight hundred and thirty-five hundred for materials for rebuilding of bridges and, and boardwalks.
Right, we don't have an actual, um, approved motion yet for the brush cutter though.
Oh. I thought we.
I don't have a, yeah, we, we need to have somebody motion, make a motion on that one.
Okay, I'll make. What is it? Um, people say, does everybody say, well, I'll make a motion that we, we ask for twelve hundred dollars for, um, brush cutter and associated equipment. Or associate, what, you know, whatever. However, we want to worry it to, word it.
Yeah, you can, you can put the specifics in, like general, you know, a walk behind, self-propelled.
Blah, 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 with, with extra blades and this and that, yeah.
With backup camera and, uh, land departure warning.
Collision.
Who's gonna second that?
I will.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I.
Paused. So moved. Okay. All right, so we have three items, uh, twenty-eight hundred, twelve hundred and thirty-five hundred. That brings us to seventy-five hundred total. I'm going to put them in as three separate requests. Is there anything else that people wanted to bring up tonight?
I don't think so.
Is it in the scope of the agenda? No.
I don't have anything.
All right.
Oh.
Nope, um, we're going to adjourn our meeting as of eight oh two, one hour's, an hour's work, guys. Good job.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all your hard work gathering info. Bye.
Good night.
Good night. Sleep tight.